But if you start it, you've got to keep it on.
Yeah, it's on.
Because if you turn it off, then...
Yeah, it'll just continue, so it's a little behind us now. Yeah, that's it. We got sound.
Testing, one, two, three. You just unmute it, you don't turn the stream off.
Right, I'm just going to mute the mics. Yeah, I won't press End Stream until we're absolutely done.
Good, because I think that's what happens.
Yeah, I'll make sure that that doesn't happen.
I would like to call a Board of Trustees, Public area on case PD 24-003 to order. It's June 3, 2025. Rule call, please.
Mr. Ador.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Craft.
Present.
Right, Eric Stode's not here today. We've got Peyton Common. Go ahead, Peyton.
Yeah, thank you, trustees. Tonight's case is PD 24-003, located on Mitchell Dewitt. Just a little context for you. This site is currently used for a single-family dwelling and agricultural use. To the north and west is site adjacent to a single-family dwelling zone, the RU District. To the south of Mitchell Dewitt, you can see that is the Glacier Ridge Metro Park across Mitchell Dewitt. So looking at the comprehensive plan, this land use, you can kind of see it in blue there. A little hard to see, but that is labeled conservation development. Kind of, you know, your typical, your single-family dwellings. This proposed development meets that land use. As you can see here, I believe there's... I think about 27 units. I could be wrong on that, I apologize, but 22 units. Excuse me.
Oh, 24.
24, thank you.
Somewhere between 22 and 24.
So based on the review of the very planning documents, including the comprehensive plan, staff notes that proposed density of dwelling units, 1.3 units per acre, is consistent with the recommendations of the plan. The proposed minimum areas to be dedicated as open space, recognized by the comprehensive plan for this area is 40 percent. Staff has reviewed the open space exhibit included in the preliminary development plan for compliance with the definition of open space provided for in the zoning resolution. Upon review, all of the area included in the calculation is properly defined as open space, but the applicant proposes 27 percent of open space. The applicant has proposed to create a dead-end street kind of at the north of the property there. By design of the proposed streets, this is not supported based on Section 500.06 and would require a variance from the applicable provisions of the county subdivision regulations. Given that the area included in any additional rights away would likely modify the open space provided for in the zoning resolution upon review... Oh, sorry, I already wrote that. This should be considered when evaluating these recommendations. While the applicant has worked cooperatively with the township fire department to address concerns about the design, as indicated in the attached correspondence staff position, is that creating connections for vehicles and pedestrians between adjoining neighborhoods and open spaces for the use of current and future residents should be the primary planning objective in this case. As a compromise to these competing planning objections, objectives, stated staff may support a preliminary development plan that commits to less than 40 percent open space as the conceptual site plan is modified in a way that creates no dead-end streets. Recommendation, the commission should, or the Board of Trustees should apply the basis for the review of zoning amendments contained in Chapters 230 and Section 500.084 of the zoning resolution and determine if the proposed application for amendment of the official zoning map warrants a recommendation of approval, denial, or approval with modifications. Based on the land use recommendations provided in the various planning documents, staff recommends the amendment be approved with modifications as followed. The applicant should revise the conditional conceptual site plan to connect a street to the existing street stubs through the northern boundary of the site and that the applicant should revise the conceptual site plan and regulation text to commit to a higher percentage of open space or in combination with recommendation one, some other appropriate amount of open space. So that is the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the board has any, or if not, I will turn it back to Mr. Craft.
Yes.
I just might add that the zoning commission approved it, but the LUC denied it previous based on those concerns about open space and connectivity.
Yeah, usually I have in my packet here what the zoning commission meeting did.
Yeah. From what I understand is that they approved it with no modifications, but let me double-check that. Yeah, I moved to recommend approval of the amendment proposed to the Jerome Township zoning resolution. So they didn't have, from what I can see here, there was no modifications.
Okay.
I might note that I did listen to the zoning commission meeting. There were some verbal commitments by the developer that were not put in right.
In the modifications.
Correct. And he might cover that when he gets up.
Thank you for your report. If you could get me the sign-in sheets.
Of course.
Okay. Do you have a presentation from the applicant?
Try to connect up to the system here. See if it works. I don't know, I think we need to...
I think you can disconnect.
I think it's asking permission?
Is there any way, is that something I can do from my laptop, or...
I do have a presentation on the thumb drive. If you want to do it that way.
That would work.
All right, let's do that.
Thank you.
Can't get technology working for us, we'll just... There's a couple of screens, it's asking for it. So this is going to be a little more challenging because I don't have quite as much control. I do want to say, Barry, you are correct. We did make a number of commitments during that zoning commission meeting and we agreed to honor all of those commitments that we discussed openly during that meeting. So there's, that's on record. The zoning commission did approve this unanimously. And so I want to go through a little bit of kind of what we talked about at the planning commission, kind of why we're doing what we're doing. So if you go down to the next page. So in general, this site, it's 18 acres and it's right below the farm at Indian Run. It's just to the east of Woods of Labrador and also to the east of Waterford Estates. It is, if you look kind of at the map from a comprehensive standpoint, it is at the very end. It's kind of one of the last developable pieces down here for the township. Everything else is either covered in the existing residential lots or it's surrounded by the metro park. And so what the comprehensive plan recommends is conservation development, which is typically smaller lot sizes with increased open space and usually use that open space to preserve the natural features of the site. One of the things that we looked at pretty hard when we got involved with this site was, number one, given kind of the nature of the development around it, everything around us is larger lots. And so for us, it felt a lot more natural for us to consider kind of those existing lot sizes and try to match up with the lot sizes where they are. If you want to go to the next one. So the existing site, with the exception kind of of simple in terms of, it gives you a lot of flexibility in terms of planning out the development. Now, on the back end of the site, or the north end, I don't see a microphone up here, so maybe I can just walk away and point.
Can you make that full screen, Peyton?
So what's kind of difficult to see here is that not only do we have this large tree stand, but we've got this existing stream.
Oh, my apologies.
That's all right.
Trying to make it bigger for you.
Seems like deja vu. Down, that will increase the size of that screen.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Can you put the screen on the live stream?
It's on there.
Okay, good.
So there is, there's an existing stream that kind of runs through the back corner of the site and then runs into kind of the farm at Indian Run, right here. And so that's, those are really the biggest constraints that we have. If you want to roll to the next slide. So this was the initial site plan that we developed for the property. So a couple of things that are kind of important to note. The development to the west of us is Woods of Labrador. That development was also developed by Roman Elliott Hughes. That was a very successful development for them. And so one of the things that they looked at when developing this site is that they wanted to be, number one, respectful to the people who had already bought homes from them. So they wanted to try and take care of those folks here. But they also, you know, realizing kind of the success of this development, wanted to recreate that on this site, being adjacent to the Woods of Labrador. And so what they did was they set out to pull together a development that wouldn't match the lot size. It's actually an increase of the lot size a little bit from Woods of Labrador so that they could essentially build what is the basis of their business model, which is, you know, large custom miller with Roman Elliott Hughes and the work that they do. They enjoy a pretty solid reputation throughout central Ohio in terms of the quality of their houses and the attractiveness of the product. And so these houses will ultimately be individual custom homes. Initially, from a stormwater perspective, one of the things that we did was we're... And from our perspective, that wasn't really desirable because it was kind of interfering with a large section of trees up here. And for a long time, the township has really been kind of focused on trying to preserve kind of existing tree masses, existing trees. We wanted to be responsive to that. So if you scroll down one more slide, one of the things that we were able to do early on in the process through some more engineering study was to get rid of that problem. We're a part of the development. But primarily, it's one cul-de-sac with a large heart in the middle, kind of a usable open space. That open space would ultimately be finished off with potentially seating areas, gazebos, things of that nature, park space for use of the residents. So as Peyton mentioned, a recommendation of disapproval initially from the regional planning commission voted a recommendation of no for two reasons. Primarily, one was that they initially wanted to see this connection between the two and two, because it didn't technically meet the definition of conservation development. And so of the comprehensive plan, that was the ruling of the regional planning commission. Unfortunately, kind of the reasons why you do things aren't necessarily something that the planning commission takes into account. It's kind of a black and white equation for them. So that's why when we went and we sat down and had our meeting with the Jerome Township Planning Commission, everybody in the board kind of agreed that, you know, we were doing the right thing, going in the right direction. But, so after that meeting, regional planning, we actually went and had a meeting with Brad Bodenmiller. We had a meeting with the county engineer. And we talked extensively about this connection. Primarily because in making this connection, ultimately what's going to have to happen is we're going to have to extend through these trees. And because of the grade difference here, not only are we going to interfere with this stream bed and create a lot of disruption, but this is going to have to get graded. The height of this road when it was installed, this is going to have to get graded up which side. So we're going to end up taking out a swath of trees that's actually like this big, just to get that road connection in there. So in our discussions with the county, the county said, well, the county engineer said the connection, but this is what our subdivision regulations say. So you need to go meet with the county commissioners and try to get a variance from the subdivision regulation to vacate that connection. You also need to talk to the fire department. So we went and we met with Chief Stewart. We explained to him what we were trying to do. The chief looked at it and said, okay, you guys are less than 30 units. That's below what the fire code requires for a second entry. So we don't need a second entry. He said, I'm on board with a couple of caveats. Number one caveat being that they wanted us to make a waterline connection to Waterford Estates through here into the development so that we could connect the waterline from the street over here to Mitchell Dewitt. So essentially what that would do from fire department would be to equalize that pressure. We've agreed to do that. So we have a waterline connection between the two developments. They also wanted to ensure that the community would not be a gated community and we've agreed not to do that. And they also agreed, they also asked us to make sure that the lot, or that the road widths were a certain width. I can't remember what they were, but we agreed to do that. So we modified the plans. The fire department gave us essentially an email stating that they would approve it based on those conditions. So then we went to the planning commission. The planning commission was scheduled before our hearing with the county commissioners. The planning commission gave us their approval. We went to the county commissioners. The county commissioners took all of five minutes to hear our reasoning for not making that connection and the county commissioners approved that variance to eliminate that connection. So we have no, lot size wise, we match up very well. So our density, or our proposed density here is 1.3 units to the acre, which is lower than, you know, typically what the township sees on a lot of these developments. Our open space is 27 percent. Our minimum lot size is a third of an acre, 0.32 acre. And our minimum lot width is 100 feet. The woods at Labrador, Roman Elliott Hughes' original development, the density was 1.2 units an acre, so statistically very similar. Open space is 15 percent. The minimum lot size is 0.28 acres, or slightly smaller than what we're proposing. And the minimum lot width is 90 feet. So we're 10 feet over that. For Waterford Estates, the density on Waterford Estates is a little bit lower. It's 0.93 units to the acre. Open space is 23 percent on Waterford Estates. The minimum lot size, or the smallest lot in Waterford Estates is 0.56 acres. And the minimum lot width is actually 80 feet. And then farm at Indian Run, and I'm referring primarily to the section of estate lots. The farm at Indian Run, the open space is at 45 percent because again, they included many smaller lots kind of in this section. And then the minimum lot size in this section is 0.26. And then the minimum lot size in this section is 0.26 acres. And then the minimum lot width is 90 feet. So from a comparison standpoint, we really felt like, because again, none of this really is going to develop the rest of the way. So trying to be respectful of these other developed conditions, creating again, a development is very, very similar to what it is today. If you'll roll to the next one. So from a landscaping standpoint, every Roman Elliott Hughes development is very well landscaped. Very nice entry features, street trees, of course, throughout the development sidewalks. You know, trees, park, open space, those kind of things. This is just kind of a typical landscape plan. Obviously, this moves forward while I'll come back to you with final development plan to give you final landscaping, final plans for that open space, you know, final design for the entry treatment, everything else. Next one from Peyton. So one of the things, mailboxes. I think everybody is aware at this point that the post office doesn't deliver to individual houses anymore. So we have to have gang mailboxes. So this is just an example of how we would handle that in landscape those. One more. Entry feature, again, just trying to establish kind of a real theme of high-quality materials, elements for the development, stone, wood, you know, very attractive design. Next one. Just some details, potential benches for the community center. You can see the mailbox detail. The mailboxes will be essentially decorative mailboxes. They'll have a stone base. They'll have a cover over top of the mailboxes. Next one. So this is primarily engineering. Not really a lot to discuss here. Our engineer actually was sick, couldn't join us this evening. But, you know, we've got preliminary engineering in here to account for stormwater, all of the things that we would normally have to account for. Roll down a little more. And then we get into kind of typical houses. So again, this is a Roman Elliott Hughes community. So you're really looking at kind of high-end custom homes. These are large houses, primarily going to be stone, stucco, hardened board, and a variety of different styles. Roman Elliott Hughes prefers a lot of kind of traditional styling and traditional details, kind of old world craftsmanship. If you want to roll on to the next one. Here's some, just some different examples. This is rear elevation. Another front elevation, a different style home. I think there might be one or two more in the painting. Yep, another elevation. There you go. Maybe one more, I don't know. Yep, there you go. So that's kind of an overview of the development. A couple of the things that we did talk about or did promise. If you want to just roll back up to the site plan, because I imagine that's where a lot of the preliminary discussion is going to go. Next one down, the one without, oh, that, no, sorry, Peyton, you're absolutely right. That one, roll that one. So a couple of things that we did agree to in that meeting was especially on kind of the, what's actually, the north actually faces to the left on this. So what's actually the top of the screen and the bottom of the screen, east and west sides of the development. We agreed to provide some additional screening and landscaping, especially where we have those existing tree lines that are going to be preserved and saved. But where those existing tree lines are, to the extent that we have kind of thin areas or other areas where, you know, there's really not sufficient screening, we've agreed to work with the neighbors to install additional landscaping. And we can do that in a number of different ways. We can do it, you know, on our side, on their side. But Vince Romanelli has always been kind of very, very kind of open and forthright in kind of working with neighbors, making sure that everybody's happy in the community, installing additional landscaping if it's necessary. When those guys make a promise, they typically deliver. They work quite a lot to make sure that, you know, their neighbors are happy. So those were primarily the things that we discussed in the planning commission meeting. So at this point, you guys have heard me drone on for way too long. I'm sure you have some questions. There's probably a few people in here that want to speak as well. So just happy to take any questions we have. I have Jim Owen here for Roman Elliott Hughes. If you have questions strictly for the developer, love to have your thoughts.
All right, any questions for, all right, why don't you go to the stuff there, Barry?
Okay. First question, he says there's going to be a water line put in. Is that going to go where that sanitary sewer line is or between the sanitary sewer line and the fence? Or you don't know yet at this point?
It's primarily going to go in between the sanitary sewer line and the fence line.
So that'll take out all the trees on that fence line, basically?
It can go right on the inside edge of that easement, essentially. And so we should be able to protect those trees.
I don't think so, based on what I've seen, whenever they dig a line out here, you've got about a 25-foot mess on your head, so.
We can certainly.
Well, I mean, our fire department has courts, so we've got to figure out.
Oh, no. I, I want to make sure that they put trees back in, for sure, adequate buffer and not rely on.
If we do, well, I'll, I mean, I'll just make a commitment here and Jim can take me if I'm wrong. But we can, number one, we can look at the placement of that line as we get into kind of final engineering and final development plan. So if we can move it to the other side of the easement, you know, we'll do that. That gets it out of kind of the tree line. If we do have to put it in the tree line, then we can make a commitment to provide, you know, some replacement trees toward that area.
And I guess, based on what I understand, we have no authority of whether or not to do whatever landscaping. The only thing we can ask for.
I personally think it's beautifully done. And I think that they've gone out of their way to ensure that that connection didn't have to happen, which preserved that entire swath of trees. So if our fire department is saying they need a water line to equalize pressure, you know, I don't want to be punitive.
Yeah, I think what you were saying is that there's nothing that we can do to say if a tree dies because you put this line in, we need to want you to replace it. Is that what you were saying?
Right, and what I'm asking for is not just a verbal commitment, but I know that in other cases, we've had neighbor agreements between the developer and the actual neighbors. Because I've had a call from another neighbor on the western edge here was concerned about burming and replacement of a fence that's broken down to keep dogs off, away from their horses and things. And I realize that we don't have any authority over the buffering and landscaping that's put in. But I want to ask if we can have you agree to have a neighbor agreement when you come back with the detailed development plan.
Yeah, we just did have a final development plan.
Yeah, we put a. Because my suggestion is, I understand you have limited ability to replace the buffering on the bottom edge here because of the sanitary sewer line and maybe because of the utility line. So you'll have to work with the neighbors maybe to put some trees on their side of the fence. But on the north side, I'm, you know, and I do want to preface by saying, I'm very pleased that you are preserving as much of the woodlands and everything. I'm very pleased that you've got reduced density, residential density. There's not as many homes as some of these planned developments. So those are some very positive points, and I think that you are going to put in an excellent quality product. So I don't want to detract from that at all. I'm just concerned, having been a neighbor to a development, I understand how important it is to have buffering, to have a berm, to have evergreen trees planted on that berm. So I would encourage you to work with the neighbors to do that. Any fencing that's necessary, that needs to go in, I want to encourage that. I know technically we can't require that, but I think if you're willing to verbally agree to have a neighbor agreement, work with each of these neighbors, I think that's all I can ask as a trustee at this point.
We'll certainly come back with, you know, some conversations with the neighbors and try to get those agreements, hopefully come back with a final development plan. And that is the township's opportunity to kind of review the landscaping and buffering and those kind of things and make that final approval.
And then there was also concern about drainage to pond next door. And I'm hoping that you're going to also do burming and buffering to keep that drainage, as you had mentioned in the zoning commission meeting, to drain towards the road and the other ponds.
Yes, yes.
I was also concerned with rear, Eric, setback set at only 30 feet, that you would not be able to put much of a berm on the west, eastern side, the upper side there. And so you may need to modify that setback, because the setback means that house could go only 30-foot from the property line.
Yeah, and I, you know, what we're, what we're allowing for in a lot of those cases is just debts and other things to kind of occur within that setback. But a 30-foot yard, rear yard should give us plenty of room to plant some additional trees back there. And again, we can, we can come back, the final development plan and check and, you know.
My experience, I've got a four-foot berm. Takes 40 feet wide to get that berm to that height. That's my concern there.
I don't, I don't know that we've committed to doing any burming or any mowling. We've committed to landscaping. The mowing would take additional space, but I don't recall making any commitment to actually mow. No, you're going to have, you're going to have rear storm drains in the back. So therefore, from a burming standpoint, we're not going to, we won't do mows, but we'll do screening. I think it's important to note that as important as it is for the neighbors to have screening.
Can I ask you to kind of state your name and address for the record?
Jim Owen with Roman Elliott Hughes. And so I think it's important for us or our residents, just as much as it is for the neighbors, to make sure that there's, there's trees and screening to protect both sides. So it's important to us in our developments. So we would do it whether we were asked to do it or not. So we want to have that screen between the communities.
The address for Roman Elliott Hughes, just for the record?
Sorry, 148 West Rock Roads, West River 4302. Then I'm Eric Smith, GT Planning and Design, 720 East Broad Street. I don't think I should make that one too.
I have one other concern, having lived next to a construction site. Are you willing to make a, at least a verbal commitment to limit your construction hours to between 7:00 a.m. and let's say 8:00 p.m.? And only use machinery?
Barry, what hours were they, what hours were they working in, sure?
They're working at Indian.
Seven, seven to eight.
They're going six o'clock over at Indian Run. Had a bunch of complaints on that, if you recall that, the Farm at Indian Run, so.
I think we can agree to the hours in each situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's all. And I am pleased that you've worked with the fire chief and get that additional water pressure in there and get your hydrants at the right places and the turning radius is all corrected. So that's a real positive. I think those are my main concerns at this point.
Hopefully, we don't have a 100-foot wide road. We have to take care of that road after we get it. We hit the chiefs. They want to make sure that there's going to be parking on one side of the road and a fire truck.
They didn't ask for a 100-foot wide road.
Okay.
They have a 100-foot ladder truck they've got to get in there. Because these are going to be houses that are up there and expensive. I think part of the reason we went, agreed on a 100-foot ladder was, if you recall, we had a $2 million fire on the home right near there.
I was just talking about the width, the width of the road, the width of the road.
Where was the fire?
Glacier Point.
No, at Waterford.
Waterford?
Yeah, Waterford, yes. Just before they finished constructing the house, it burned down. So we had to, we had to wait, I think it was 17 minutes for a 100-foot ladder to get in there or something. So, yeah, so.
Just now it come down. Because it couldn't get in there. Is that partially because it was gated? Is that why they asked us not to gate the community?
That's part of it, but it was because they, they had to wait for a ladder truck to come in, I think from Marysville, if I remember correctly.
I think Washington's tied up.
Did you have any questions for Gary?
I don't.
All right, thank you, Gary. All right, Bonnie Roberts, please state your name and address for the record.
Bonnie Roberts, at 8530 Mallard Circle, Lake City, Ohio, 43064. I, my husband and I are one of the houses that back right up to this neighborhood. And I just wanted it to be a record, without beating a dead horse, that that tree line that right now separates us is fairly sparse to begin with. They did take trees down when they put the sewer in. And Roman Elliott Hughes had agreed to work with us to put additional trees in, whether they're on our land or on their land, but in order to create a bit of a buffer. We've been, as many of you see in this entire area, 15 years with a lovely field behind us. And now we're going to have some big houses to look at. And so we, I just, again, wanted it to be a record because it is important to us that those, those trees be maintained and maintained.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Just to be clear, Roman Elliott Hughes was not responsible for the installation of that sewer. That was, that was extended when the Farm at Indian Run was developed and it was before Roman Elliott Hughes got a contract on that property.
Thank you.
But because the easement is there, you cannot plant trees over that sewer line, is that correct?
We can't plant trees on the sewer line, but we can plant trees behind, in between that and the other tree line, and we can plant trees on the outside of it. And we can plant trees on the adjacent property as well as the homeowner also worked there.
Barry, thank you. Question for Julie. So some of the things that have been promised will be worked out before the final development plan, before we'd approve that. Would you think it'd be necessary that if this were to be like approved, that we would make the modification and the approval here so it's stated in the record also?
So some of the, it depends on how concrete the applicant information they can provide to. Obviously, some of the things sound, there's still some information that needs to be sorted and reviewed in terms of like.
Like vague, yeah.
But I know that, so I think there are a couple of ways to handle it. If, I mean, the board can either include those as conditions of, if it's the will for approval, conditions of approval, or kind of keep those in mind since it is part of the record that when it comes through on the, for the final development plan, seeing where those items, if it shows items are really at home.
It would be my wish that we, at the final development plan, remember what we did, the few things, just a few things. I mean, if we had 12 things, I would say we better continue this and write them all down and make sure that it's in the record. Where are you guys at with that?
Well, just to clarify, we do not review the final development plan. It only goes to the zoning commission after this point.
You're approving the rezoning only and then once.
So we better.
It would be for, we would be looking for substantial zoning compliance at the DDP phase with the planning commission.
So if that's the case, there are a couple of, a couple of options that we can incorporate. They would be general comments, don't count for the, that way the zoning commission, once they receive the final development plan, they have those comments. But obviously, there are some things that just wouldn't be nailed down. The other option is at least staff who would find, requesting that zoning commission be aware of some of the discussion points. That way we're doing Peyton.
Can we just simply require a neighbor agreement between a developer and all the neighbors?
Well, it takes two parties to agree, so if they have like two neighbors that are just like no way, no how, it could be challenging how we think.
Why don't we include the modifications that were verbally made at the zoning commission meeting that has already been discussed and the zoning commission agreed to, the applicant agreed to it. They're here before, it didn't make it into this at this point, so let's agree to that. And then anything beyond that, I trust that the developer is going to do the right thing. I mean, even people who are not big fans of development in this township have said Woods of Labrador was done beautifully. And this is Romanelli, correct?
Correct.
So I, I, I believe that it'll be done properly and, and they'll honor their word if not, but take those modifications from the zoning commission.
Peyton, what were the promises made at the zoning commission meeting?
I might mention though, that I did hear during the zoning commission meeting from one of the neighbors that Romanelli sold off some lots to Fisher Development. They made the same, made the same commitments. That's, that's why I'm going to have something in here to, here to be some buffering and screening for the neighbors.
What I would say in terms of what the board does, have the ability to kind of control the conditions, it would be conditions on this site. Obviously, I think there is a, there is a willingness and a desire for some type of potential agreement with neighbors. However, I don't know that the board can officially hold everyone to say, listen, as a condition of your zoning, you have to enter into it with the neighbors.
So why don't we do that?
I apologize, I was not at the planning and zoning meeting or the zoning commission meeting. So I'm not, was not aware what was verbally agreed to.
Well, it's on the record, and I think that what we can do is pass a resolution that simply states we include the modifications made at that meeting. How would you word that?
So because the zoning commission, and the zoning commission's approval does not have any modifications, in order for the board to officially, it sounds like they were informal modifications, there were verbal commitments. In order for that to actually be made as part of your approval, the board would have to specifically identify what those items are.
Okay, can we identify these, can we list these out, please? The verbal commitments made in the zoning commission meeting?
Yeah, the verbal commitments essentially were to do exactly what Barry suggested, was to provide additional screening along the north and the, not the north, east and, east and the west boundary lines. You know, and to work with the neighbors to make sure that that screening was accommodated, whether it be on our side of the property or their side of the property.
Okay. Was there anything else?
I mean, the, the width of the road and the waterline extension are.
Those are part of the details of that development, that they have to, for, based on.
And we're not, you have to get the fire department's approval in there.
Sure.
Yeah, we can't require that modification, only the fire department does that.
Yeah, we got right here.
That's the one with modifications.
Right.
Yeah, I feel better that we have a grid with the modifications.
I'm confident you're gonna do a good job with it, I just, my experience.
It's on the record, both times, just stating we're gonna do this, so we're not, we're not gonna walk away from it, especially if it's on the record.
So what I would, based on that feedback, I think two additional modifications, or two modifications to the zoning commission's recommendation. One, additional screening along the east and west boundaries of the property.
Okay.
And two, I, I'd have, using good faith effort to work with neighbors to address buffering and screening concerns. Again, it's good faith effort, obviously, if an agreement can't be struck, or if buffering on the site is appropriate, or basically it needs everyone's needs, we should meet for off-site.
Sure.
Lots on.
Okay.
Okay, so. So I would like to move that we.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
I didn't realize you had to sign up to make comments.
Oh.
So do we do public comment yet?
Yes, would you like to speak?
State your name and address for the record, at the podium.
Oh, sorry.
The, the meeting's being live recorded and.
My name is Jeff Stamps, and my address is eighty-two ten Waterford Way, which is Lot One in Waterford Way. And I'm lucky enough to be the president of the Homeowners Association for Waterford Estates as well. I have a question about the drainage. We have a significant drainage problem that's on the east side, coming down the back of all of our lots. And I couldn't tell from the drawings whether any drainage would be impacted coming over into Waterford Estates from the new development.
I can answer that.
What we could do is have Gary answer that.
Yes.
No, I'd be happy to, yeah.
Do you want him to pull up anything, or?
I, I don't think we need to. You know, part of what we have to do, obviously, to work with the county engineer, and we have to meet all of the county engineering standards and engineering best practices. But all, what we have to do from an engineer's standpoint, all drainage that occurs on our property, we have to capture it. And we have to, we have to take it to a stormwater base and detain it and release it, you know, at, at a pre-developed rate. And to the extent that there's any off-site coming, whether it's from your property or with Labrador or adjacent property, we have to accept that's rule number two, so we can't interfere. So if there's drainage that's coming out of your backyard, or if there's drainage that comes down along that line and collects there, we're actually gonna have to have storm sewer basins and swales kind of in those backyards to collect all that soil water.
Take it off.
Yeah, so the situation that you're seeing should be improved. The only thing we couldn't do is, you know, if you had a dip in your backyard and it goes back up by the property line, we won't be able to fix that because it's all property.
Sure.
But if it's rolling in, or if it's rolling down the side of the property line, all that would be collected.
Very good, thank you.
HLE president, God bless you. HLE president, I said, God bless you. All right, I think we're good.
Got the language?
I'm waiting for Julie to finish her, I'm gonna.
Almost done.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Okay. I was just gonna have you read it, Julie. I, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Jerome Township Zoning Commission to approve this proposed amendment to the official zoning map with modifications be and hereby is adopted by the board, therefore approving the amendment with the additional modifications by the board as reflected in attachment one, which are?
One, the applicant shall add additional screening and buffering along the east and west boundaries of the property as part of the final development plan. Two, the applicant shall use good faith effort to work with the neighbors on the east and west boundaries of the property to address buffering and screening concerns.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Ador?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Crack?
Yes. By the time seven fifty-two, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
Sure.
We're gonna take five minute break. Officer Reynold?
So our last, uh, our last meeting, we had a special meeting to discuss the comprehensive plan update. And I would like to open up this, and we continue, we closed the meeting and continued it to, uh, this, we, we didn't close the meeting. We continued the meeting, uh, for today, uh, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees, uh, comprehensive plan update, uh, June 3rd, 2025, uh, to order. The time is, uh, eight oh five. Rule call, please.
Mr. Ador?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Kraft?
Present. So at our last, uh, meeting, uh, we had praised all the work that had gone into the comprehensive plan by our citizens, staff, stakeholders, um, zoning commission. Uh, and there were a couple of items that we were up for discussion, and if I recall correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong. There was discussion about the densities and concern about the, uh, the density, especially in the Darby watershed area. And I think, uh, uh, trustee Davis had said there was something with, uh, commercial and, uh, densities in discussion, and I think the plan was, uh, Eric and MKSK was going to work on, uh, five point one version. Uh, I don't know, do you know that that got put, put together, a five point one, or if we were waiting till we have the discussion tonight?
No, there's still a couple of items that, uh, I did cover separately with Mr. Snowden, and I understand Ms., Mrs. Davis also covered some of her concern with him, and we still have got to get some of those items resolved.
Okay.
Um, and with Mr. Snowden not being here tonight, I would prefer to continue the discussion the next meeting. If that's okay with you.
I just didn't know if we wanted to like have, uh, I don't think we've got the document ready where we could actually take a vote tonight. But if we wanted to like, get our point across, maybe we could do a little bit of that and continue this. Then at the end, maybe continue this to our next meeting.
If you'd like, I, I think, I met with Mr. Snowden, and just to update you, that, um, he has a rough draft of an extended version to accommodate some, but not all of the, um, big Derby watershed into low-density residential. And there's some obvious points of delineation that he was making the point, we don't want to split parcels, so, um, I was fine with what I discussed with him at this point. Um, I know that-
And would you say low-density residential, uh, what? Is that sort of what you mean?
Maximum of two, two units per acre, low-density residential. And then the remaining areas would be medium density, which would be up to three units per acre, as per the table that was, um, revised.
Now, I, if you could pull up the map that has the Derby watershed area, it's like got red around, red around the area, I think. I'd like to mention- Do you know what page it is, Barry?
No, I have one map on 54, but that's not it. It's forty-something.
Forty-something.
There, that's it.
So the boundaries of the township are the blue, right?
Right.
And so most of the township is in the Derby watershed.
No, just a little over half.
So, uh, you know, Plain City is already into the township, and, uh, one, 'cause I know that the recommended, uh, density was two to four originally, and the compromise had been three. Is that, is that correct?
The original-
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. My concern is just-
For medium density, it was come, reduced to three.
This all could be greater Plain City, because if they, if they offer a zoning that's more, uh, you know, preferential to development, the developers may choose to annex into Plain City versus stay in that township.
I just want to clarify to show you that this was already low-density residential, most of this.
Okay.
What we were adding in was these slash areas.
Okay.
To them, and that's most conforming part of-
This was, uh, maximum of two or maximum of three?
Maximum of two.
Maximum of two?
Correct.
Okay.
Some of these darker yellows, they were maximum of three, as the revised medium density, but they should be maximum of two. Part of these are already built out, according to Eric, as maximum density two, that's built out, that's built out. Most of this is already built out, and these are the only areas that aren't already-
And these are, these are areas that would have access to central water and sewer, or-
Yes, to, yeah, maximum two.
Correct. You want to share that with?
So basically, here's the, but this would have been splitting some parcels, and this Eric said is already justified, and it's in two minutes per acre, maximum. This is, that is the only area, um, discussion would be this area and that area up there.
So the area that's currently, uh, low, low-density residential, is that what you said?
Correct.
To the west, can you show her what, what that area is?
Yeah, all this light yellow is already low-density.
Okay.
And then the other concern, I guess, was with commercial, the wasn't, was concerned about the 50-foot limitation on commercial or high-density residential. And-
To, would that be the building height that you're talking, okay, okay.
Do you want to speak to that?
I mean, it was my understanding after speaking with Eric that any compromises that had anything to do with that were rejected.
No, the compromise was to just remove it from the table and everything, so that there is no limitation. Stated in the comprehensive plan that that would be resolved by the, something resolution.
I think we need to table and do some more work.
Okay.
I agree. It's hard to explain.
Right.
So, so we, we continue to this meeting, so what I do is continue two weeks from now, is that what we're thinking, or do we want to continue?
I think continue for the next meeting, two weeks from now.
I need, just, I would really like the board to be ready to adopt this. I certainly would like to have everybody on board. Um, and I'd like to get this done, so we can focus on, uh, our approach to the needs of safety in the community with the fire, fire, the upcoming decision about the fire levy renewal, and then also what we're going to do with Station 210.
Right.
Well, that discussion's June 10th. This would be the 17th if we continue.
Yeah.
So this is coming after the fire levy decisions.
Okay.
I'm ready to put it to bed, yes, okay.
All right, let's continue.
All right. So it'd like to move that we continue this, the discussion on the comprehensive plan update.
Second.
To the 17th, is that what you said? I didn't want to, sorry. To, uh, June, June 17th, at 7:00 PM here at the Township Hall.
Second. Mr. Ador?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes. Time's eight thirteen. I move that we adjourn this comprehensive plan update meeting.
Seven.
Continue, continue. All right. The time is eight thirteen. I move that we continue this meeting.
Second.
Are we, are we ready to start our regular, regular meeting? Julie, thank you. Peyton's got it over there. So you gotta hit a button to stop the one meeting and then start the other one?
It just, it just keeps going.
Okay. All right, all right.
Thanks, Julie.
Right.
This is kind of hidden, hidden back there, this is the first I've got. Right, the time is, uh, eight fifteen. I'd like to call this June 3rd, 2025, Jerome Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Rule call, please.
Mr. Ador?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Kraft?
Present. We could rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Does anyone on the board have, uh, any changes or adjustments to the, uh, agenda?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Right, Robert, it's yours.
Uh, you have the minutes from the special meeting of May 20th and the regular meeting of May 20th?
Move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
After reading.
Oh, sorry. Rule call.
Mr. Ador?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
You have warrants per your pending warrant report. They're warrants 45646 through 45683, noting, uh, the additional 45683 is to Riker Chevrolet for the purchase of the road division truck that was approved. Uh, they're expecting delivery this week and wanted a check at time of delivery. And then 95078 through 95088. Move that we approve the warrants.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Ms. Ador?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
That's all that I have.
Thank you, Robert.
I'm assuming no public participation. Bob.
Okay. Right, uh, we had a chat individually with the Public Safety Officer.
They indicated that they had nothing to report at this meeting, so he was busy and needed to leave early.
The administrators report, uh, everybody's got a report in their packet there. Is there anything that the board would like to discuss?
No.
Okay.
I would like to add a little bit to it. I know we're going to say, mention it during the announcements, but, um, the car show coming up on June 7th. It's from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM along Estates Court. They're going to have Fast Track parachuters jumping into the show. Ohio Highway Patrol helicopter flying in, a petting zoo, a live blues band, a DJ, face painting, and food trucks. So hopefully the weather-
This is becoming, this is becoming like a festival, not a, uh, not a car show.
They're expecting quite a few people at this, so hopefully, uh, we get a little bit of press coverage before the Saturday.
Wow, that sounds-
You come out on Thursday.
Like a big deal.
Wow, wow. Yeah. Um, I'm going to go on to, to, to new business. Uh, is everybody available, uh, July 1st?
July 1st, isn't it?
July, what?
July 1st.
They're, they're wanting to put a hearing.
It's a public hearing for, uh, PD 25001.
Oh, let me watch.
I just wanted to make sure, 'cause-
Is that the first thing?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I could be up here by myself, I don't know.
I'm a devil.
No, that, that should be fine.
Okay, okay, good, all right.
What time is that?
Uh, yep, seven, yeah. Just before regular, regular meeting. That'd be the first Tuesday in July.
Are you talking about what's under new business?
Yeah, yeah. Just setting a public hearing for, uh-
For the old business, actually.
Yeah. Well, we talked about the comprehensive plan, and we'd already talked about the sign.
Uh, no, I, I think Brandon wanted us to make a decision on the sign based on the numbers here, and I think that it was delayed last meeting because you wanted to have a chance to look closer at the numbers and get a call. Do you have any questions, Joe, or any more concerns, Robert, with the numbers here, and?
We have received a quote for the sign itself of $59,816.26, and then the additional quote they got for the electrical work was $4,650.
And I, I know that there was a concern that, about funding of this. Do you have sufficient funds in the general fund if we vote on this?
There is money within the general fund for this, and as you noted, we did receive easement money for the front of the township here.
$45,000.
Correct, which I believe was, was what the board wanted to primarily use for this project.
This would be an additional $20,000 basis over that.
It was just too much. The tornado sirens, two or four of those, and then this sign, and it just seemed like it was really like moving a little, a little too fast for what, what I was comfortable with. But I've had my eyes set on the sign for quite a long time. Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead.
So Robert, just let the administrator go forward with a certain amount with both totals together?
Prove the expenditure of these fi- funds to these, to vendors, um-
Do we need to put a little leeway in here?
I finally had the assignment fixed. Well, no, it's-
Up to a certain level.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Sure, if I'm in that. Yes, that's fine.
And, and designate our township administrator to coordinate the installation of this project. I so moved.
Second.
Yep.
Rule, rule call, please.
Mr. Ador?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Were you ready? Sorry.
Yep, we're good.
Moving on to a new business, uh, I'd like to set a public hearing for case number PD 25-001, Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, here at the Township Hall at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Ador?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes. Yeah, I think we'll wait for Brandon on it, or do you?
No, I, I think you wanted to, we, we need to move ahead with that. He's, uh, our township administrator has interviewed numerous candidates for this position. I think we had almost 60 applicants at first, and narrowed it down to, I think, six or seven. He's selected candidate A as being, um, his, his choice for this position, and would like our approval for him to move ahead to offer a conditional, um, offer of employment, so that they can proceed with the other things that they need to get done before we actually approve the final.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Ador?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Announcements.
All right, announcements. I'm going to let Barry have a one more time. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Like, uh-
Okay.
This Saturday.
The car show is this Saturday. The show is from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM along Estates Court. We will have Fast Tracks parachuters, that's F-A-S-T-T-R-A-X parachuters, jumping into the show. The Ohio Highway, Ohio Highway Patrol helicopter flying in. This all depends on the weather, I'm guessing. If it's too windy, they may not parachute in or fly in a helicopter. I have a petting zoo, a live blues band, a DJ, face painting, and food trucks. We're expecting a large crowd, and weather looks promising so far, according to Mr. Stan.
Is it a car show, or is it our own township fair?
It's a community car show.
So did, what was it, 150 cars last year? Does anyone recall the number of cars approximately? It was quite a bit for a first year show.
It was closer to 200 cars, and they're expecting more than that this year.
I was at an event in Marysville, and folks were talking about it.
Yeah.
So that's-
And it's the benefit of following 15, and there is a flyer-
Yes.
Available, but it is not, unfortunately, on our website. I tried to get that corrected, so.
Okay.
Uh, township offices will be closed Thursday, June 19th, 2025, for the holiday. Uh, offices will reopen Friday, June 20th, at 8:00 AM. Uh, if you'd like to receive notifications regarding the Board of Trustees meetings, please email the Township Office- at jerome township at jerome township dot com. The township's always accepting applications for positions on our zoning boards, uh, please visit Jerome Township website to fill out an application. The time is 8:25, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.